Excellent, that works. So if everybody would like to stand and place your hand over your heart and join me. The flag salute. Dr. Shower, would you like to lead us?
I would be proud to. Here we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Dr. Shower. Okay. During closed session, the board took action to appoint Lois Yount as superintendent of the Galt Joint Union Elementary School District. This action was approved by the board by unanimous vote with all members being present. The employment agreement will be on the next regular board meeting agenda for approval. And that being said, David Gordon is here from Sacramento County Office of Education. And David, would you, uh, would you like to give us a brief overview of the process and how we went about selecting our, our new superintendent?
Yes, thank you, President Silva. I am, I am happy to do so. We were very pleased to be selected by the Board of Education to serve as the search team for the Galt Joint Union Elementary School District search. I led the process in collaboration with my able colleague, and I want to thank her, my colleague or executive director of Human Resources, Colleen Johnson. I want to thank Colleen for all of her fine work on, on this process. It went very smoothly, largely thanks to her. We conducted a statewide search and advertised the position on our own SCOWI website on the search engine called EdJoin, which is the preeminent education search engine in California. And then the EdCal newsletter, which is the newsletter of the State Administrators Association. On April 14th, we held via Zoom both a staff and community forum to solicit stakeholder input regarding the characteristics people were looking for in their new superintendent. And we recorded that information and shared it with the board on April 28th. The candidate pool we received included 25 applications and there were a number of exceptionally highly qualified applicants. We met again with the board and they selected six candidates to move forward for interviews based on our recommendations and some considerable discussion. We held the interviews on Sunday, June 6th at the Galt Joint Union Elementary School District office. We had selected six candidates for the interviews. Two dropped out shortly before the interviews. This is late in the hiring season, so some got jobs, but we interviewed four very excellent candidates. And one candidate was selected as our finalists. And I just want to give a little recap of the qualifications of our final candidate, Lois Yount, who the board chose as your new superintendent. As I said, the process was a highly competitive process, including paper screening, background checking, and an oral interview with the board. And Lois Yount's qualifications include the following, and, and I'm struck by how much they matched the qualifications that the two stakeholder groups, the staff group and the community group were looking for. She has elementary teaching experience, a history of increasingly responsible leadership positions, starting with an assistant principal position, a principal position in the district, and now experience as the chief business official. And finally, principal coaching experience through our SCOWI School of Education where she's been engaged in coaching both prospective and sitting principals. Our education includes an MS degree in law from the McGeorge School of Law, a professional clear administrative services credential from the University of Laverne, and bachelor's degrees and clear multiple subject teaching credentials in liberal studies with bilingual option, both from California State University Chico. Additionally, she is bilingual. She has completed the state level fiscal crisis management team chief business official mentor training program, which is the preeminent training program for chief business officials in California. She is obviously committed to your district as evidenced by her 21 years of service to the district. She's a data-driven decision maker, a collaborative leader who leads by example. And we believe she has the vision to lead the district forward and most of all, again, coming from both the staff group and community group to always keep us her North Star, making decisions based on what's in the best interest of students. And finally, I want to thank the Board of Education for their diligence in listening to the staff and community input and describing the characteristics they, they desired in a new superintendent. They were a real pleasure to work with. And finally, 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 thanks, go to your retiring superintendent Karen Shower, and especially to her outstanding executive assistant Kwaibock for making the process run as smoothly as possible. It was amazing how well everything was put together. So we got this work done in a matter of, of weeks and I think came to a very positive final outcome. So that's my report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Dave. And also I forgot to add, congratulations, Lois.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Silva. Thank you, Mr. Gordon and Board of Trustees. It is such an honor to be selected as the next superintendent of the school district, especially, you know, the district I started my career in. I look forward to continuing to serve the board, the community of Galt, students, staff as superintendent. And I also want to thank Dr. Shower for her support and leadership. She's been our superintendent, my superintendent for the last 14 years. And she's been a great role model for me and given me the opportunity to step up in different leadership roles. I really thank Dr. Shower for that. Just a great responsibility. I'm excited about it. I look forward to the hard work and dedication to be a successful superintendent. This is a wonderful school district that does great things for students and staff. And my goal is just really to continue and expand on that greatness. Really excited and I thank you for this, this opportunity.
All right. Thank you, Lois. Okay, um, Dr. Shower, we should probably move on to item D then, the teleconference board meeting protocol?
Yes, and again, just thank you again. Congratulations, Lois Yount and, and David Gordon and Colleen Johnson. Thank you once again for, for your leadership, for supporting our board and our school system and community with this process. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. It's our pleasure.
Yes, thank you both very much.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
All right. Board President Silva, I'll move on then to our teleconference protocol. And our session is being recorded and that devices, we really need our public's cooperation to make sure that devices are muted. We may need to mute your device if you do not do so. We do have a public comment support for our action items. And that public participation follows Board bylaw 9323. In that public comment is three minutes per agenda item. The board will limit the total time for public comment for each agenda item to 20 minutes. With board consent, the board president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comment. And that a regular board meeting can be adjourned by 10:30. This is not a regular board meeting. This is a special meeting. We do support email public comment. We did not receive email public comment for our special meeting. We do also support teleconference webinar participation. And so as the meeting progresses, we'll ask that if you would like to make public comment on an agenda item, that you please use the raised hand icon. A meeting facilitator will announce your name when it's your turn to provide public comment. And then when unmuted, if you would please state your name and indicate the agenda topic you are commenting upon. This is a remote virtual meeting for all of us, including our governance team. So for action items, know that our board, when a motion is made, will follow with a roll call vote that will be facilitated by Mrs. Bock. And should a board member lose connectivity by teleconference or phone, the meeting will be delayed about five minutes before reconvening. So we're hoping that doesn't happen tonight. And I also wanted to share regarding our meeting tonight and future meetings is that when we're talking about the school's reopening, what I'd like to share with our board and with our public right now is that we're looking to move to in-person for the public as well when we are ready to do so. There is some information that has come out very, every day, there's new information that is coming out. Our city at this point, when we use the city facility, City Hall, right now is not available for our organization to use. They're projecting maybe in by mid-July. So perhaps the board may want to convene an in-person meeting in July if we're ready. But we also are working on with the leadership of Mendo, looking at some ways that we could have in-person and simultaneously support teleconference for members of the public who may not be able to attend a board meeting in person, but still would like to participate. So again, those are some things that we're working on related to our, our board meeting structure. And before I go further, I just wanted to note, I'm, I, Kwaibock, I do see a couple of hands that are raised.
That's correct, Dr. Shower. Would you like them to address the board now?
Have they informed you as to what, what agenda item it's in regards to?
No, they have not.
Okay. Well, okay, since, well, if there's only two with, you know, with the concurrence of the rest of the board, well, we'll go ahead and hear their comments now.
Okay, I do believe I did receive a message from one of them. It is regarding the new superintendent.
Okay, and that's what I figured.
Okay, the first public comment is from Heather Wetzel.
Okay, go ahead.
Hey Heather, are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Sorry, I apologize for background noise. I'm at a baseball game for my son, so. And just on behalf of all of our district and GFA, Dr. Shower, you have just been absolutely phenomenal. Your dedication is, the bar is very high, but at the same, same turn of point there, Lois, we are so excited for you. And congratulations to both of you. Totally different journeys, but I was like, I'm not gonna cry. Of course I'm gonna cry. It's me. We just appreciate everything. And Lois, USCBO, all of the roles you've played, Karen, all of the roles you've played in, in the district. You guys are very much shining stars. And I couldn't be more proud to be able to, to continue to work in this district.
Thank you, Heather. Thank you, Heather. Our next public comment is from Kim Lazama.
I just want to say virtually the same thing. I am feeling teary myself. I have really loved working for Karen. I feel like you are such a good, strong leader and have been such a great thing for this district. And I have worked with both you and Lois on different projects. And I feel both of you are so competent and strong and have your hearts in the right place and really make decisions that are based on facts and information. And I am so sad to see you go, Karen, but of course you, you get to have a life after this. But Lois, we're really glad that you're who the money was on, Lois. We had our money on you. And we're really glad to, to have you as our leader as well. You've shown yourself to be strong in so many of your roles and we're very excited to have you at the helm. So take care, ladies. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you, Kim and Heather. Thank you.
Thank you. Kwaibock, was there anybody else that wanted to make a public comment?
No, there are no further requests for public comment at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item E, reports. And that would be Dr. Shower.
Thank you. So we are in the process of, of transitioning back to more normal services for children. And we are accomplishing that through a very comprehensive summer program. But at our, our last board meeting, there was a request that we agendize, you know, this informa-, this, the California reopening and what that means for school systems. So what I would like to do, and again, ask our directors to assist me as need with this as well, is to provide an update concerning what I'll call emerging guidance. Almost, it's like trickling in right now concerning California reopening. And then what does that mean for school systems? And as I talk through that with you, I'm going to take it through the lens of our summer program, through the lens of board meetings, and then also through facilities use and community agencies. So again, as we have said at about every board meeting we've had, is that our goal is to reopen in a traditional model when conditions permit. And we are preparing to do that in the fall in a five-day full-day model. And right now, our summer program is a full-day model. And there are services or some things that we're doing that we were not able to do as we transitioned to AM PM. And then some things have changed again that we'll talk to you more about. On June 11th, last Friday, late last Friday, the California Department of Public Health Officer released an order. And it provided more general guidance. And then that guidance stated that individuals must continue to follow the requirements in the current COVID-19 public health guidance for K-12 schools in California. So a number of the precautions that we're currently following with, you know, are continuing. But there are some modifications that we'll talk to you about. Yesterday, on June 15th, the California Department of Public Health Guidance, which was confirmed with Sacramento County Public Health as of this morning, requires that masks be worn indoors at K-12 schools by everyone, regardless of vaccination status until further notice. And this can change because of what's happening at the national level, but also the state level. However, starting tomorrow, masks must be worn indoors. What we're doing is that masks will be worn indoors at school, but for recess and other outdoor activities, masks are not required. So what I'd like to share with our Board of Trustees and with the public that's listening in is that that is some change right now that we're working within, that masks, yes, they are required in school, in classrooms, in, indoors. But for outdoor activities, masks are no longer required for students or staff. We shared that information with our school administration and supervisors across the district this morning. And we asked that leadership then share that information with staff who are working with summer school, students at the schools. And messages were sent home with parents. That is why we adjust, made that adjustment starting tomorrow. So I'd like to share with you, starting with that, that we, we do anticipate more changes coming. I mean, this is good news. This is good news that this is happening. And, you know, we're California. You know, we're, we're breaking through this pandemic. You know, more opportunities are, we're able to do things that we weren't able to do for quite, quite some time. I brought this up earlier when it comes to, to future board meetings. Is that, as I said earlier, nor in, in normal times, we would have our board meetings at City Hall and even sometimes if there were small special meetings just at our district office as well, sometimes at school locations. And the governor, because the California blueprint for a safer economy has been retired, there's a new executive order right now that does give agencies that conduct public meetings until October 1st, like beginning October 1st. Then boards and other entities that have public meetings would need to be ready to, to convene what I'd call normal in-person meetings. We think that, that we will be able to come through with something far before late September because of just the guidelines that, that can be followed. So we're working on that as I had, had shared earlier. But again, know that, that agencies do have until October 1st to make that transition. We do not plan to do that. And, and again, this is where our superintendent, along with Tom Silva and the board, and there may be some discussion about that in this report later about that as well. And we also, in this very wonderful community, in the small but mighty community and school system, is that we share facilities. And, you know, we use City Hall to conduct board meetings. We have space that Parks and Recreation uses to provide opportunities for community members and others. We also have youth sports agencies, Boy Scouts, other agencies that take, that apply to be able to use our facilities or outdoor spaces. What I want to clarify first is that we have already supported that effort prior to the California reopening in some modified ways. We've had, uh, we have, currently have a church organization that has an application that was approved and is using space at, at our, at one of our schools. We have a scout troop that made arrangements for a recruitment event. They had to follow the capacity limits that were set at the time. But we did permit that and they followed precautions at that, at that time. We also have a basketball organization that has been using our outdoor courts to be able to provide sports opportunities and basketball for children across our, our community. Moving forward, and what we're looking at, and please know also that I've been in communication with our Parks and Recreation Department, trying to look at what our, our community is doing to align where we can. Lois Yount also has been working with schools insurance authority to look at, you know, what can be possible or what we may need to modify. What we're looking at moving forward for community agencies using our facilities is that we will expand so that now our youth sports and other organizations, more of them could participate using indoor facilities. This does include completion and approval of a facilities use application, health and safety guidance alignment that applies for, you know, the conditions that, that we have, which have improved. There's insurance coverage and there are application fees. And once again, Lois, I'm going to turn it to you on that because I think there may be some additional information. I know that you reviewed once again with schools insurance authority about our practices that we were currently doing and what we were looking to do moving forward.
We did. Thank you, Karen. So working with schools insurance authority, they have approved inside use for sporting events or other activities. They have added to our application COVID-19 addendum or waiver that the organization would be required to follow safety precautions and that in order to use the facilities, whether it's outside or inside. But we are going to move forward. We have one group right now, a basketball organization that is in line. They've already turned in their applications. They were just waiting for the clearance to be able to use our inside, inside facilities. So we'll start working on that.
And Donna Whitlock, Director of Educational Services, I know also that you've been coordinating with our school nurse who's on duty this summer because again, we just are, we're really working on the communication so that we're in sync. Anything that you would like to add regarding our reopening, transition again in our school district?
Just kind of the outline that you said, we're, we're excited and happy that our children, especially in this heat, can remove their masks outdoors. But many of our safety guidelines are still in place. Our district nurse is still doing daily contact tracing. We are still asking families to daily self-screen at home. All those staff and students are no longer, they are no longer required to do the self-screening on the, the frontline application. They still need to do the daily screening. Our district nurse is still reporting daily to Sack County Public Health is if there is any exposures or positive cases. And they're also encouraging staff and then families to continue with surveillance COVID testing into the fall. And that's the asymptomatic testing. So that's still in place at the Shaboya Center. And of course, the physical distancing while we're in the classroom. Outside outdoors, there's not a physical distancing requirement, but still indoors and on the bus, it's still one, one student per seat on the bus, a minimum of three feet in the classroom. And in the, in a lunchroom without masks, it would still be six feet. But yeah, we're moving forward. Thank you, Karen.
Okay, so that's, that's where we are right now. Again, we just, we, we are in constant communication with different agencies along with other agencies in the community too. But we're, we're just so happy to see again, just increased engagement with our children and opportunities. And I guess I shared in a different setting is just before this board meeting, I just went on a quick walk down the sidewalk here and just saw families enjoying the Galt pool. And I think it's just, you know, it's, it's feeling more and more normal in Galt, in the community of Galt, in our school system. So back to you, Board President, in terms of any, any additional information that you would like or any.
Well, just looking at item number two, the summer school program update under reports. Just overall, how is it going? I mean, what kind of feedback are we getting from, from parents, students, teachers?
Well, let me, I'll start with this. And then David Nelson, Principal Valley Oaks, is going to really share one school's example tonight. And thank you, David, for doing that. First of all, we have 1,339 pre-K8 children that are coming to our summer program at every school location. And incredible staff at all levels. Their, their care, their inspiration. Just with all that we've been through in another three weeks, it's just so wonderful to see, you know, what is happening across our school. So David, would you describe to our board, what's it looking like at Valley Oaks Elementary School for the summer program?
Perfect. You guys hear me okay? All right. Well, first of all, I want to say thank you, Dr. Shower, for your many years of service. It's been wonderful to work with you and it's been an honor to work in the same district as you and for you to Uh, it's been an honor to uh work uh in the same district as you and for you to serve as a mentor to so many of us. So. Thank you very much. And to Lois Yant, we're we're excited for the appointment uh Superintendent, and uh. I think that we are all uh looking forward to working uh with you and your leadership as well. So uh, congratulations, Lois. Um, so th- thank you for giving me the opportunity. Um. You know, I I I'm speaking from the perspective of of Valley Oaks, and I know that each school is a little bit unique in in terms of what they offer and what their experience has been. But I'm really happy to say that we had about half of our students enrolled uh in summer school. Uh, so roughly two hundred and fifty or so um enrolled in summer school. And so far, after six days, our average attendance has been right around two hundred and thirty-five. Uh, so our attendance has been um. Better than I think that we thought in terms of ongoing attendance through six uh six days. And I think um. I would like to say that it has to do with what we're able to offer. Uh, we took like probably all the other schools, uh. A whole school, a whole child approach to learning. And we wanted to give students uh multiple opportunities to build those relationships with uh with their teachers and with staff members. To have social emotional learning opportunities and to just kind of get back into the groove of being in school. You know, summer school, as as we know it right now, is more like regular school than the regular school that we just finished really was. So we're going from eight to two. Um, we're having lunches, we're having kids eating in the cafeteria. Um, and that is again, really uh exciting to see the kids in there, to see them spaced out a little bit, but in there eating and and talking and being kids. Like hearing that excitement and the laughter, uh seeing them out at recess. Um, many of the kids have three recesses, most have uh two, at least in the upper grades. Uh, at Valley Oaks, we're able to offer uh every class, three periods of PE a week. Uh, three periods of music a week, which is more than they get in a regular school year. Uh, in addition, our band, our music and band teacher is actually working with our band students as well. They're they're playing uh their instruments outside. Uh, every teacher is just doing fun and engaging stuff. I think today there were. Five or six different classes that were outside working on science experiments and and different things like that. Um, I but I think the 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 best thing about summer school so far. Has just seeing the kids' excitement, uh seeing them excited to be at school, hearing them talk to each other, uh seeing them run around at at recess. Uh, being normal kids again, um, is is really kind of the highlight of of summer school, seeing that excitement for learning. Uh, doing those fun things, uh staffer, excited staff, you know, we kind of said, let's let's make this uh. E- engaging for our students, let's make it fun, um, let's make it educational, and they've really taken that ball and ran with it. Um, so, you know, kudos to our staff, um, Assistant Principal, uh Laura Marquez, been a wonderful help. Our our office staff has been terrific, uh, all of our classified staff, we have uh instructional assistants there every day. Yard supervisors, we have kitchen staff. So it's really like a a regular uh school year. And it's just, it's really been awesome. It's been a lot of fun for, I think, everyone uh that's been involved in the process. Um, and we hope that a lot of this can carry over uh into uh the the regular school year. And, you know, with today's announcement that the kids can take off uh their masks when they're outside, that just lea- you know, kind of builds on. Um, this feeling of getting back to normal in schools, and the kids are really excited about that as well. So that that's what I wanted to share with with all of you, and I'm I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you guys got.
I don't have any questions after that. That was a great day. Thank you. That's great news too. I mean, that's pretty much, I mean, I think that's what we all wanted to hear. You know, I mean, you know, I think we're glad that that's, you know, that that you're that, you know, that you have that level of engagement. I mean, that's awesome. One thousand three hundred and thirty-nine total throughout the district. That's 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 amazing. So, yeah, glad to hear it.
Yep. No, thank you so much. We uh, you think at a later date, we will come back with information because again, our Director of Curriculum Claudia del Toro Anguiano. Has really worked through a very comprehensive evaluation process that I think is going to help us learn from this work. Taking it into the new school year. And I also wanted to recognize Jennifer Collier, our expanded. Um, extended learning supervisor, because some of of the things that David was describing, there are artists in residence programs, some other things that are going on that. Jennifer um has pulled together. So I think when the time is right, um, we we may have a follow-up uh for the board. Got one more week to go, one more week to go.
It's going by fast. Okay, so then that's it for reports.
President Silva?
Yes.
As um a parent and a community member, when we talk about normalcy, um. It getting back to normal is the pickups and the drop-offs and then driving down the side street and be like, oh, school's getting out and here to dead stop. So it is, it's kind of nice going through these things. And I know um at McCaffrey, they're doing amazing things with all the kids, social emotional. Well-being, they're doing Makerspace, um. Criminal justice. I hear a lot about criminal justice around the house now, so. Um, I'm really excited about the summer program and all the kids and just getting back to somewhat normal life.
No, I agree with you. I mean, this last year has really felt like a marathon, and it just feels like we're. We're just really hitting that finish line in stride. And I think this was, this was a great opportunity for us. So, yeah, as a parent, as a community member, I I know I certainly appreciate what we've been able to do. All right. Anybody else from the board? Any other comment? Okay, well, then if not, we'll move on to item F, new business.
All right. Um, again, there there was a, uh, there was a board request, um. Board members requesting that we look at moving the regular board meeting from June twenty-fourth to June twenty-first. So that we uh it could better meet the the needs of scheduling so that we really could have. More full participation of all of our governance team. And so there's board consideration um. To again, uh, consider approving the June twenty-third um. Twenty-twenty-one regular board meeting being moved back to June twenty-first next Monday.
Okay, any need for discussion on this? Um, obviously, the board members, we all understand why we needed or felt it necessary to 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 move the meeting. But just for clarity's sake, it's, you know, the understanding was that not all board members would potentially be available on the twenty-third. But we could all be available on the twenty-first, and we like each other's company, so we wanted to to move the meeting and and be able to accommodate that. So if there's no discussion on that, then do I have a motion to approve agenda item two zero two point two zero four?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Wes Cagle. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Gracie Molson.
Thank you. I have a motion from Wes Cagle to approve item number two zero two two zero four, seconded by Grace Molson. Tom Silva?
Aye.
Tracy Skinner?
Aye.
Casey Raboy?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes five zero.
Thank you, Koi. Now we'll move on to item two zero two point two zero five. And that is public hearing and board review of the twenty-twenty-one twenty-two Local Control and Accountability Plan, the LCAP.
The LCAP, all right. We are, again, we are are very, uh, I I would say we're very proud of the effort, the ongoing effort that's been put into. The plan uh for the public hearing tonight. Um, we've taken it through process. We have provided ongoing reports uh to you as well. And again, this is, this will be a public hearing about this, but I do want to share. That the plan was posted for public review and feedback beginning May twenty-seventh. Our County Office of Education um is also involved um with our plan in terms of looking at how things are going. Um, the measures of academic progress data, that was some feedback that we we did receive from two parents. That, um, you know, they were wanting to know when that was going to be in the plan. And that that will be in the plan. Uh, we just were not ready at the time that this went to the board, but the um. Final plan that we bring to you for approval will have the MAP data in it. The plan, um, the LCAP documents include the budget overview for parents, the annual update. The plan itself that has two goals, the two goals that I think are the best goals ever in the history of our district. Number one, engaging learners through a focus on equity, access, and academic rigor. With inclusive practices in a variety of environments. And goal number two, promoting whole learner development through social and emotional learning opportunities in a variety of environments. So there's a plan summary, there's evidence of stakeholder engagement, there's goals and actions with metrics. There's also additional information in terms of what we would do for high-needs learners and expenditure tables. And what would happen um following the public hearing is that we would bring this back to the board. Um, again, with the MAP data included at this time and consider it for um board approval. But before I say anymore and turn this back to Tom, uh, our president, Board President for the public hearing. Um, Donna Whitlock, anything else you would like to share concerning this public hearing item?
No, you just, um, perhaps the annual update. I wanted to clarify this annual update for the LCAP. The first part of the annual update is from the two thousand nineteen twenty school year. So as you looked through the the update that in your board package, you'll notice that those were expenditures from the prior year. And the reporting was suspended last um last June. So we went ahead, we still completed the updating process, but we just um didn't present it to the board last year. The second part of the update, though, if you recall back in, I believe, August, September. We presented the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan, which we called the Mini LCAP. We've and you approved our Mini LCAP Learning Continuity Plan. And so the second portion of the annual update. Is an update on the expenditures, actions, and analysis of the Learning Continuity Plan. That's the second portion. That's in there that um makes the annual update actually longer than the actual LCAP this year. But I wanted to make sure that you kind of knew that it was two portions. And then the last thing is the Budget Overview, which is just two pages, and it's a graph. And it's just a visual for our for our parents, and that's an overview for the two thousand twenty-one twenty-two school year. That we will be bringing back to you next week also. Any questions?
No questions. Um, then in regards to item two zero two point two zero five, do we have any requests for public comment during this public hearing?
Mr. Silva, we do not have any requests for public comment at this time.
Okay. Then in that case, the uh public hearing in regards to item two zero two point two zero five. Uh, the preview of the twenty twenty-one twenty-two Local Control Accountability Plan. The public hearing on that item is now closed. And then we'll move on to the next item, which is two zero two point two zero six. And we'll open a public hearing and board review of the twenty twenty-one twenty-two budget.
Thank you. I will give you some brief highlights of our budget for twenty-one twenty-two for this public hearing. I am going to share my screen just to show you a a couple of documents that might help. See that? Got that? Okay. All right. So of course, this budget that we've built um is based on the May revise. Um, we know there will be changes, of course, because we will have our carryover when we close our books for the twenty twenty-one year. And then also, we are expecting substantial changes um based on what is actually approved here in a couple of weeks by our governor. Some of the highlights, um, cost of living adjustment for the twenty-one twenty-two, um, we are anticipating a four point oh one cost of living adjustment. We are hearing that that could be increased to what they're calling a mega cola that could be an additional one point oh seven for us. So that would bring in additional revenue. Um, we're also looking at what's in this budget now that has not been before. Are all these additional one-time funds, both state and federal funds, um, is now in our budget, both twenty twenty-one and twenty-one twenty-two. It increased our revenue by um over ten million dollars. Um, our revenue now for twenty-one twenty-two is fifty point eight million dollars. And I'll show that on the next slide as well. Stirs and purrs has increased. We are hearing there might be a change with that when the budget is passed, we will see. Uh, we still are anticipating a revenue decrease due to decline enrollment that will impact us in twenty-two twenty-three. We have five hundred thousand dollars in the James B. McClatchy Foundation for Preschool Services. Three proceed, three percent routine and maintenance. Um, our unduplicated pupil percentage, our UPP. Those are our students, um, foster youth services, English learners, and most socio-economically disadvantaged. That percentage has increased slightly. We're now at sixty sixty-three point three two percent. Um, and we are budgeting for a slight um cafeteria fund deficit that we will have to offset with some other funds at about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Um, our unrestricted reserve levels, um, what I would like to do is I would like to go to the next slide to show you. These numbers. Our unrestricted reserve level is down here at the bottom. We are anticipating to end the year with a nine point eight two percent reserve. And then next year, we're looking at a fifteen point five two, nine point four two the following year, and then ending the multi-year projection with a four point two three. Um, it's important this, we have not seen numbers this high in quite a while, and it is due to all of the extra relief funds that we have. Um, we are keeping in mind that here this next fiscal year, we do need to look at restructuring. Um, the classified salary schedule, and so having this reserve level will help us to be able to do that, to get back, to get up to the fifteen dollar minimum wage. Uh, for next January. When you look at our total reserve package, this includes um. Our restricted reserve, and that is all of our our federal and state relief money, mainly it's the S R three. Which is just alone about eight million dollars. And you can see those amounts are are right here for you, right here. Those amounts right here, those are, that's our restricted carryover. We have not budgeted those amounts yet. It's in our budget, but we have not. Put them in expenditures yet. What we have to do is for this eight million dollars right here for this next fiscal year. There is a new S R three plan. The template is out, and we will be bringing to that to the board in September on how we plan on spending these funds. And you can see these funds decrease each year, and by this year here, twenty twenty-four, we will have had to have spent all of those funds. The federal funds do expire in September twenty twenty-four, which is this last year out, and so we will be bringing to the board. Over the next few months and years, our plans on how we will be spending these federal funds. But that is why, when you see the total reserve package, that's why those numbers are so high, those funds sitting there. Um, overall, it's again, we're very happy to see a budget like this. We have not seen this in a long time. Um, it's needed, it's needed to do the things we're doing right now, like the summer program. We we should be able to do that next summer as well. And so just really looking at at increased services with these extra funds the next few years. Any questions at this time with the budget? I can show you up here too as well. Sorry, I don't want to make you dizzy, but here's our total revenues. Here's our revenue line. Um, you can see for twenty-one twenty-two, the biggest increase is right here. Is the federal funds at ten million dollars. And then the next few years out, it goes back to normal. It goes back to what we normally expect in federal funds, and there we go back down to our forty-one, forty-two million budget that we are used to. And there we go back down to our forty-one, forty-two million budget that we are used to. Any questions at this time?
So any questions from the board? No? Okay, well, thank you. That was a, that was a very thorough explanation. Um, yeah, it was, you know, it's, I mean, it's curious to see how much that, you know, the one-time federal funds really increase our budget. But again, we have to balance that against declining enrollment, so we definitely need to be careful and pay attention to this. All right, uh, then I guess the next thing is, Kawai, do we have any requests for public comments regarding this uh this public hearing?
Mr. Silva, we do not have requests for public comment for this item.
Okay. Well, then if that is the case, then we will close the public hearing in regards to item two zero two point two zero six, public hearing and board review of the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Um, next item on the agenda then is uh, are there any requests for public comments for topics not on the agenda?
There are no requests for public comments for to- topics not on the agenda.
Okay. Then a review of upcoming uh pending agenda items, our school district properties, low-performing block grants, mathematics, and Brown Act updates. Uh, is that uh something that the board still, we all are in concurrence on? Okay. Then if that is the case, we are done. This meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you, everyone, very much. Congratulations, Lois. Thank you again so much, Dr. Shower.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Right.